Good evening and welcome to the September 18th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting for New Kent County. If you would please, please rise for a moment of silence. Please turn with me towards the flag and repeat after me as we say. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Ms. Berry, roll call, please.
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Rose? Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Before we move on, there is a new adjusted agenda for tonight. There, on the previous agenda, there was new, under new business, which is, was item number nine, a waiver request for CarMax that has been withdrawn by the applicant. So now, we just do away with that line item totally. Moving along, approval of the minutes from our last meeting on August 21st. Are there any additions, corrections, or edits that need to occur through those minutes? Are we on a roll tonight, Ms. Berry? Huh? I think this will make number three?
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no corrections that need to be made, I'll make a motion to accept the minute as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Abstain.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving along to our next item on agenda is the citizen comment period.
And there has, there's nobody that signed up for that. We'll move right on to item number six. And for that, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Davis.
I'm pleased to welcome Mr. Vlad Gravilovich and Todd Gordon tonight with EPR Consultants. We had a meeting this afternoon with the New Kent Comprehensive Plan Update Steering Committee, 3:00. So some, a few of us have been here for a little bit this afternoon, Mr. Moyer and Mr. Bennett, myself, and as well as staff. And I'm basically just going to turn it over to Mr. Gordon and Mr. Gravilovich, just to let them lead the discussion. We've done, they have done quite a bit of work to this point, and we're still in the midst of more work to be done. And it's with the goal to, of course, give a report out to the Planning Commission and as well as the Board of Supervisors hopefully in the upcoming weeks. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Gordon or Mr. Gravilovich.
Okay. Start introduction. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Vlad Gravilovich, Principal with EPR PC in Charleston, Virginia, and Todd Gordon here is working on the technology. Thank you all for your time tonight. We want to give you a summary of the comprehensive plan input and the work that's been done so far, which primarily focuses on land use. As Todd will share, we've had some very good public input meetings in July with good representation from county citizens. We're going to share what they said in terms of land use and transportation, and then how we've taken that input and turned it into a first proposal for land use map.
All right. I don't feel confident, but it seems to be working for the moment. So thank you very much. We've been very pleased to work with the steering committee that was appointed by the Board of Supervisors to help update the comprehensive plan. Of course, this comprehensive plan was previously adopted in 2012, so we're updating for the past 10 years, and at the same time, looking about 20 years into the future. So we're, it's officially called the 2045 Plan. That's about how far into the future we are attempting to look. So contents of this presentation, a little information on the background of the project, a little talk about growth. You all know the story of growth in New Kent and the impacts that it's had. As Vlad mentions, there's been a great deal of public input. We'd love to fill you in on some of the things that we've heard. And then we want to talk about future land use. That was the topic of today's discussion with the steering committee, and we'd love to show you some of the same things. First things first is that in order to engage with the public, we established a project website. So that website is newkent2045.com, and that's where we post background information, the results of the various phases of public engagement, and other information for everyone's benefit. And so we encourage you all to share that website if any chance you get to let people know. But so far, we've had a really great public engagement response on this project, very engaged community. Right. There it goes. So the project schedule is that we began in, about this time in 2022. We had our kickoff meeting in August about a year ago, and began with foundational work that is reviewing the existing plan, collecting demographic information, really understanding the growth that's occurred and the growth that may occur in the future in New Kent. We had our first public meeting, October of '22. We held an open house at the Visitor Center, introduced people to the project, and asked them to help begin to educate us about their vision for the future, what they like about New Kent, what opportunities they see, and so on. At that same time, we launched an online survey. We'll talk some more about that. But we've just completed our second phase now of public engagement in June. So this summer, where we were a bit more specific, we had some mapping type exercises that we helped work through with people. So what comes next? So we're there between steps three and four. What comes next is implementation. That is, how do we accomplish the individual steps that the public wants to see, and drafting a plan that puts all of our comprehensive plan information into a document that is hopefully readable and attractive and understandable and usable? The final adoption of the plan will take place next year, probably in the, in the late winter to spring area. And of course, that comes back to you. So we will be seeing you again. So the comprehensive plan in 2012 covered the topics that are listed there, and these are typical comprehensive plan topics, a bit of history about the area, discussions of your natural environment, as well as your public facilities, your economy, in this case involves a great deal of agriculture, and finally, housing, transportation, and land use. These are all the big comprehensive plan topics. We've been paying particular attention to transportation and land use over this summer. The other thing that we need to continue to be aware of is the strategic plan that you all adopted in 2021, which also came with its own community engagement process and helped to establish sort of your overall long-range vision for the county. And all of that gets incorporated into the comprehensive plan. It's, this is not, the comprehensive plan is not a, a new vision. It is a structure built on the foundation of the strategic plan. You certainly cannot do this plan without discussing population growth and population projections. So you all know that you've been an exceptionally fast-growing county, particularly in suburban residential development, and all projections, and these projections come from the Weldon Cooper Center at the University of Virginia, who's the official state demographer. And their population projections suggest continued growth in New Kent, and I think that's quite likely, given your past growth. Current population is around 23,000 people countywide. The projection is that by 2050, you may be approaching 38,000 people, or maybe a bit above. And that's a continuation of dramatic growth that you've seen over the past 20 years. So what does that mean? 11,000 new residents by 2050. The current average is 2.63 persons per household in New Kent County, so that number may mean just over 4,000 new housing units. We also need to be aware that planning is a continual process, and that you all continue to work with individual developers to plan individual housing projects. And so these are some of the approved but unbuilt lots listed in various developments around the county. These are lots that you already, they're in the, in the pipeline, let's say. You've approved them, you've seen the plans for these. So that covers some of the 2050 growth projection. So adding all those together, just over 2,000 lots of approved but unbuilt housing in the county, which leaves a gap of another 2,000 between those lots and the population projection for 2050. So let's talk a bit about the engagement. Vlad, did you want to speak about the engagement?
I'll go through this quickly, but we, as Todd mentioned, we had our first open house on October 12th of last year. We left the boards at the Visitor Center for one week to collect additional input, general information on growth and land use issues, and we opened our first survey, which was kind of your attitudes about future for the county. Had almost 500 total responses. Then we did a second survey, just this summer, which was more of a map survey. But the general takeaways from that area, a lot of expressed expressions of support for the county itself, its government, its rural character, community spirit, schools, low crime rates, things like that. Areas of dissatisfaction were traffic accessibility or access, some concerns about development in rural areas, broadband, and then the amenities that go along, should go along with these new communities of retail dining, et cetera, and desire to focus on preserving natural areas, protecting schools, expanding them, public safety parks, and transportation improvements. And then this phase of engagement was specifically on land use and transportation. So we had, as I mentioned, three very successful public meetings, eastern, middle, and western parts of the county in June. And at the same time, we opened an interactive mapping survey, which asked the same questions as the, as we asked in person at these meetings. Next slide, again focusing on transportation and land use. So the results, I want to share with you briefly for the meetings and for the survey. For land use, we asked people to put these three colored dots on the map, green being areas you'd want to preserve, yellow being areas you want residential growth, and red commercial growth. Overall patterns, you can see here, clearly people want to continue preserving the Chocomine-Pamunki River areas. You see the red dots clustered around the interstate areas and the 33 corridor and Bottoms Bridge area, of course. So people are not seeing, they want commercial to be in the sprawl pattern, but they want it clustered around the areas where you've got the, the best transportation. And then residential, more dispersed throughout the rural areas, and of course, filling in some of your large-scale communities. Next slide. We also asked people to give their verbal input, and some of the takeaways from this give you more kind of detail than the maps. Preserving areas, adding additional public parks and green space, maintaining buffers between commercial and residential areas. As far as the, where commercial growth should go, or what kind of commercial growth, a lot of people want the commercial amenities that go with, that rooftops, entertainment, restaurant, hospital, healthcare. They favor growth around the courthouse and eastern side of the county would like to see commercial growth in particular. On the residential growth, it was interesting, people were, in addition to kind of the, the existing residential neighborhoods filling out, seeing assisted living and elderly housing, affordable housing. And then there were definitely some strongly felt comments that new housing wasn't needed. We had a few of those. Public amenities that, that go to round out these communities, industrial space filled out, more public schools as we grow. And this last point, we especially want to take to heart in our future work, is design guidelines that focus on the quality and character of new development. And then we also asked transportation comments. Again, a map. We gave them four color dots for bike needs, green, pedestrian yellow, bus, orange, safety issues in red, and traffic or congestion issues in blue. Overall pattern here, you can see, is the blue and the red, which is traffic and safety, tended to group together around the interchanges, of course. A lot of comments on 64. Not everyone was aware about the timeline for 64 widening or the interchange project around the new Buc-Ee's. So a lot of comments around that, but that is obviously in the works with VDOT. And then on the bike and pedestrian needs, kind of scattered around where people were living, people wanted better connections where they lived. Next slide. And then the verbal takeaways, again, were particularly useful here. There's a little bit of a delay. What people were saying was that they want to have the ability to bike and walk where they live right now in the communities. Some interest in, in regional trails too, like James City County has. As far as the congestion and safety concerns, okay, again, a lot of things on, on 64, but also the existing kind of rural roads or two-lane roads that are unsafe. People don't have site distance, particularly areas around schools, they wanted to see made safer. Additional bus stops, bus routes, you know, concern that when you have an incident on 64, congestion goes to 249 and 60. And people wanted to see commuter lots, entrances to schools, bus pull-offs, and there was discussion around light rail, some people feeling that it would be feasible here, others saying we didn't have the density. That's a quick tour of what we heard, but very valuable input, and we've taken that into the next step of the future land use.
So the future land use map is probably the central feature of the comprehensive plan as it is for most communities. And that is a map of where you expect development to build out, or what your expectations are of the development community over the next 20-plus years. So the map that exists for you now looks a bit like this. It breaks the county into 10 to 12 future land use categories and describes them. The existing plan describes them quite briefly, but, so the future land use categories are on one axis of this chart, while the strategic plan place types are on another. So the strategic plan also considered the sort of future complexion of development in New Kent, and it described it in some ways using the same language, that is, the, the kind of hierarchy of rural crossroads and hamlets and villages, descriptions of what happens in the countryside or rural lands, and a little bit about residential development. So there's some overlap between the comprehensive plan categories and the strategic plan categories, and so we've had to work within that structure. But these are the 10 place types that we suggested for inclusion in the comprehensive plan. These match the ones in the previous plan. There may be changes coming. We had some discussion with the steering committee earlier today about that. But these are a spectrum of the types of development that may happen in New Kent County in the future, from conservation, which is essentially pristine natural areas that ought not be developed in any way, to dense mixed-use development in villages, or large sort of regional-type development in commercial and economic opportunity areas, and industrial areas as a kind of economic development and employment center. So these place types or future land use types are included in the existing comprehensive plan, the 2012 plan, but they're described very, very briefly, just a sentence or two each. So one of the things that we've, tasks we've set for ourselves in this project is to describe these places much more fully, to describe what they look like, what type of roads they include, what type of buildings they include, and, but also to show them, to kind of show them off to people, using graphics as sort of, for instance, development sketches, photographs of other typical places in nearby communities of Virginia, to show people what these place types may look like. So these are the 10, the 10 place types suggested, and then we were sort of wrestling with the idea of how to describe them, and these are the 10 descriptors that we came up with. So for each place type, what is the intent, a brief description of, of how it might work, what uses might be included? Oh, some handouts being handed out, thank you.
The disclaimer?
The disclaimer?
Small print.
It is very small print. So the, the chart that she's handing you essentially describes these place types, the 10 place types and the 10 descriptions, building character, their, their height, their density, what sort of open spaces included in each, what sort of transportation facilities, what sort of utility facilities, and so on, including what zoning categories might facilitate development in each. So the, the fine print is very fine, and I do apologize.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, got it?
Yeah.
All right. So this chart, so the place types and, and their, their descriptions is what we met with, about today with the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. We went over the details. We won't go through all of the details with you now, but we appreciate their input and we appreciate your input as we wrestle with this issue. So again, the idea is to take each of these place types and, and describe them so that residents of the county, business owners in the county, hopeful developers and others understand the county's vision for different types of development in different areas of the county. So the other challenge is how to apply those 10 place types to a map of the county. Where is this type of development for each of those categories? Where is it appropriate? So in addition to looking at the old future land use map, some other considerations. First, public utilities. So your county is, is partially covered by public water and sewer systems, and we need to keep those in mind. Dense development or denser development can happen where public water and sewer utilities are provided. The rural area of the county does not have services, and if it is your vision that it stay rural, it ought not have services. There it goes. Oh my goodness. Another point of analysis that we've worked on and we're showing off to the steering committee earlier today is this map. This is a map of all new buildings who have been granted a building permit from 2006 to 2022. So this shows you the kind of spread of development in the county over the past 15 to 20 years. It also shows you what those areas were called in terms of future land use by the 2012 plan. So you can see that a lot of development has happened in areas where, sort of filling in existing residential developments, the PUDs, but you can also see that some development has occurred in areas of the county that were called rural, at least in 2012. The forecast was for the future to be rural, but nonetheless, some development happened in those areas. In particular, Farms of New Kent is a very large development and makes up a lot of those dots. That is developed in an area that was called rural in the future land use map in 2012. So the following, sometimes it takes two seconds, sometimes it takes 12. The following chart shows the count. So you can see that those new buildings were primarily residential buildings. You can see that many of them landed in the suburban housing land use category as defined in 2012, and many of them landed in rural lands. So that might be developments that were approved in rural lands, like Farms of New Kent, could be cluster subdivisions, could be individual homes on individual lots in the rural areas on the larger lots that you do allow. The other thing that must be taken into account is zoning. So while your comprehensive plan is the guidance document, of course, that talks generally about the future land use and the character of land use in, in, in the future, zoning is the regulatory branch that enforces rules on size and density and other provisions that essentially implements the plan. It's the law that implements the guidance. So we want to pay attention to what land is already zoned. So in addition to the matrix, which we understand is a great deal of dense information to hand to you, the other thing that we spoke about with the steering committee earlier today were proposals for revisions to the future land use map. So that, that previous map we had on the screen earlier, as we do our new comprehensive plan, we need to make any necessary revisions to that plan. And we've suggested 15 or so individual revisions. Those revisions are shown on these next few slides, but several areas in the western area of the county where we know is the growth area, there is a proposal on the table that we move lands from the rural category to the village category. This is right in the, where development is occurring along Route 60, and in an area that is served by public water and sewer facilities. So this is an area that has the infrastructure for development, and so our proposal is that it, it be allowed to host that. There's also an area there shown as industrial. That's an area that is currently on the future land use map as suburban about the future land use and the character of land use in the future, zoning is the regulatory branch that enforces rules on size and density and other provisions that essentially implements the plan. It's the law that implements the guidance. So we want to pay attention to what land is already zoned. So in addition to the matrix, which we understand is a great deal of dense information to hand to you, the other thing that we spoke about with the steering committee earlier today were proposals for revisions to the future land use map. So that previous map we had on the screen earlier, as we do our new comprehensive plan, we need to make any necessary revisions to that plan, and we've suggested 15 or so individual revisions. Those revisions are shown on these next few slides, but several areas in the western area of the county where we know is the growth area, there is a proposal on the table that we move lands from the rural category to the village category. This is right in where development is occurring along Route 60 and in an area that is served by public water and sewer facilities. So this is an area that has the infrastructure for development, and so our proposal is that it be allowed to host that. There's also an area there shown as industrial. That's an area that is currently on the future land use map as suburban housing, but nonetheless is New Kent Airport and some surrounding facilities. So looking for a category that fits what exists there. Overall, our work on the future land use map is to do several things. First of all is to, in some ways, ground truth this map. If something is already a suburban housing development, it ought to be called suburban housing development on the future land use map, because that is its future. It's not going to change now that it's a suburban housing development. The other thing is to incorporate proposed developments. We know you have developments that are in the pipeline, and so they should be shown truthfully if they've already been approved. And so there's a residential development there along 60 that we need to go ahead and change from rural to residential development, because that is a proposed project. There was some discussion with the steering committee about the industrial designation of the airport and whether something that offers more flexibility, like the economic opportunity category and zoning ordinance district, might be more appropriate there, might allow more flexibility, creative approaches to the future of the airport and its surroundings. Also, a proposal here to change the, essentially, the Quinton area, Food Lion and Firehouse and so on, from the rural crossroads category to the hamlet category, which is a bit, a step up, a bit larger at scale, a bit, because that area has seen that sort of, has seen development. There was an overall discussion, if you look at those 10 categories, they're the sort of, one of the development categories is a rural crossroads, which is, deals with a very small amount of development that might be allowed where two rural roads meet. The next step up is a hamlet, which is a bit larger, but still a very small localized community, and the step up from that is a village like the Courthouse area or Providence Forge and areas of Bottoms Bridge. There was some discussion about whether the rural crossroads category should be eliminated from the plan at this point, whether it was too small to sort of adequately provide for or guide development. So that's something that we need to continue to discuss with the steering committee and continue to study. Other potential future land use categories or revisions would be to incorporate more parcels into the Courthouse Village to allow a bit more growth in this Courthouse area. The necessity to move a parcel from residential development to economic opportunity, because that parcel near the interchange is now going to be a very large convenience store called Buc-Ee's. And other proposals to move some parcels into the residential development category that have either already been developed as residential subdivisions or are surrounded by other parcels that are designated for residential subdivisions. In the Providence Forge area, we had a parcel there that needs to be moved from rural to residential because of a proposed development. There was also some discussion about several parcels surrounding Providence Forge that were previously shown for village-type development, but nonetheless are properties that may not be suitable for village-type development because of the roads, the very narrow rural lanes that serve them, or because of wetland conditions that maybe at this time they ought not be considered for rural, for a village development. Fourth and final map of proposed land use map revisions deals with the eastern end of the county, where we have one parcel or one area that is planned for utility service but designated rural. It's very, it's also adjacent to proposed residential zones, so it's very likely that, or it makes sense to us that that ought to be designated residential as well. Also, an industrial parcel there. This is a case where while the future land use map calls this area rural, it's zoned industrial now. So the reality is that it's likely to be used for industrial purposes with that zoning already in place, and so we ought to be aware of that for the future. And the final change in this area of the county is the potential designation for residential development in the area of Plum Point. So these, this is an area that is currently rural and designated rural, but is in fact divided into very many, very small lots. It was a residential development proposal or scheme many, many years ago and became divided. So it seems that those very large lot, very small lot pattern lends itself to future residential development in that area as well. So these are, these things, you know, the matrix and the potential map revisions we show you in order to share what we're working on with the comprehensive plan steering committee. We met with them just a few hours ago, and so we've already received feedback that's going to lead us to make some changes there and continue to work through those map and description changes. Next steps for this plan come in three big categories. There are many small steps, but three big categories. First is transportation analysis and planning. As we settle on the land use pattern that is the county's future, we need to consider the transportation facilities and the improvements that are going to be necessary and the reality of those improvements looking forward. Second is individual action strategies. You all know your 2012 comprehensive plan, and you know that it contains many strategies that are the individual steps that you propose to take in order to secure the future vision for the county. So we need to revisit those. We need to make sure that those continue to aim where we want to go. We need to check off any completed tasks and so on. The other step, the third step, is drafting a plan document. So that is creating all the graphics and text that are necessary to explain this vision for New Kent's future in a document that's easy to use, easy to read, easy to understand. We also mentioned the first and second phase of public engagement that happened earlier in this process. There is a third phase of public engagement that will happen at the point where we have drafted materials to show. And so when we have the drafted land use map, when we have transportation information, when we have vignettes of potential development in various land use categories, we look forward to sharing that with the public, receiving further input so that we can revise the plan before it eventually comes to you for adoption. All right. That was the end of the presentation. So we appreciate your involvement in this plan. Some of you serve double duty by also being on the steering committee for the comprehensive plan. We appreciate the efforts of that body to steer the project, and we look forward to incorporating the input we got today, the input we've gotten from the public, and to creating this plan document. We are very happy to answer any questions or have any discussion with you all, and we appreciate your input very much.
If I might add, Todd, so any commissioner who has any comments that they may not have tonight, but may be at a later date, if you want to forward anything to me, and I'm glad to forward it to Todd and Vlad, and they can incorporate that into what they're doing.
You all got some handouts, and if you all would like, we could provide digital versions of those if it's at all helpful.
Questions on the maps?
Sure.
I have some questions on the maps. Can we go back to slide 32, please?
Okay. 32, that's the eastern end of the county.
Is that Mackamy Woods, the red lot down there in Dyson Reservoir? Small red dock?
No.
No.
It's across the way from the...
That's industrial zone?
That's Bev Heath's industrial park and the mini storage down there. It's like right in the middle by the pallet company.
Okay.
Yeah. That's Barham's, yeah. Yeah, Mackamy Woods, speaking of that, that's, that's something that was caught by the steering committee that needs to be put in the future land use map as conservation. And it's not currently, so we already, yeah, we caught that one. But yeah, that's, that's further south, near on the James City line.
Slide 31.
It's coming. There it goes.
So the purple area on the far left below Route 60 that's got the water around it?
Here.
That's industrial?
No. That's in the economic opportunity category, which is a category that includes commercial, some light industrial, and even some residential.
That's where that industrial is.
Yeah. That's also a site that's pretty heavily impacted by wetland issues.
Concrete plant there, too?
The asphalt.
Those are my questions, I can...
Great.
Clearly, my mapping skills are not place for me.
Is the survey still available, a mapping survey?
Yes, it is. So when we, in the second phase of public engagement, we released the map survey, and so just as we had people come to several schools and sit down and put stickers on maps, we had the mapping survey available online. In late July, we downloaded the results that we had at that point, but the survey continues to be active and can still be contributed to. And so there's a link to that on the project website, newkent2045.com. And so we certainly welcome any additional input through there, and we'll continue to incorporate it as we go. You're good. You're very good.
Any further questions for Todd or Vlad? And again, I mean, feel free to reach out, and you can send questions or comments to me, and I'm glad to forward that to Todd and Vlad. We're, I'm in monthly contact with them, several times a month sometimes.
That's right. We meet monthly with staff and the chair of the steering committee. We've been meeting quarterly approximately with the steering committee at important junctures, for example, just ahead of the second round of public engagement, to plan that round of public engagement, and today to consider future land use categories and map, map changes.
Well, with that, thank Todd and Vlad for coming tonight and giving us the presentation and keeping us up to date, and we'll be hearing more from them. And at a point in time, we will be setting up something with the, with the board, too, to give them update as well. So if you do have some comments or anything you want to add to it, I suggest maybe get them to us sooner rather than later, so we can incorporate those before we do a board presentation. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for your presentation and your extended work for us and for the county. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. I have none. Any of the commissioners have any unfinished business? If not, I'll ask the staff if there's any. Seeing none, I'll move on to the next item. Public hearings, there are none, none were publicized, so we'll move on. New business there, that was a scratch from the very beginning, and we move on to chairman's report, and I'll say I have none. So we're now to Ms. Pearson with the plan RBA report.
Oh, thanks. I did attend the meeting last Thursday. Unfortunately, I left my notes at home, but they are going to have, it was a really short meeting, went over some budgets and things like that, but the one thing that they did mention that I wanted to just say here was that in November, right, probably the week after the election, they are having a newly elected officials meeting and a, like, a reception in the evening for Plan RBA, so that all the newly elected officials can kind of go see what Plan RBA is like. I'm sure some of us already know what it's like. But it also, the current elected officials could also attend that and, you know, talk to the new people and get them involved, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Commissioners' report, and I'll start with Mr. LaRochelle. Anything, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Butler?
No, sir.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pearson?
No.
Mr. Tiller? Ms. Townsend?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Again, I want to address the issues...
Address the issues of the intersection of Dispatch Road and 249. I'm very concerned for that area, and I hope that our border supervisors will be looking at the highway report soon, but the traffic since school's been in has been very intense trying to get in through that area, and I'm just hoping that no one gets hurt in that section.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I add to that?
Certainly.
I think VDOT was kind of waiting for school to start this year and just to see what changes may need to be made there, and I will continue to ask for a study at that intersection, as I have for the past several years, and I won't give up.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Actually, a lot of times when I, if I go that way, I'll just go back out to Quaker and go around and come back out to Hennepieck and come back around, just to make it a little bit easier to get out.
Adding to the traffic woes of Quaker, okay. Dr. Schmidt?
Nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
None.
Mr. Moyer?
I'll just say there's, Timmer Commerce has a candidate forum on Thursday night at 6 o'clock at the New Kent High School auditorium.
Candidate forum? For any candidate?
All candidates for, I think, elected office. I think everybody's going to be there, according to the list of going.
So that'd be board, I mean, board and...
Board supervisors, school board.
And county clerk?
Clerk, sheriff.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Moving on, I have nothing, moving on to staff reports, Ms. Ledoux.
I am happy to report, we might be able to cancel October. I know I've been saying that for months, but we have no new public hearings that have come in, no further presentations right now after tonight's, unless you all want to meet to talk about comp plan further, but let me know, otherwise we might plan on canceling.
Thank you, Ms. Ledoux. Next item is just a note of the next meeting for this commission, if it needs to occur, would be Monday, October 16th, 2023, at 6:30 in this room.
If I have no other business, and I have none, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Kenny, I'll let you, Kenny, I'll let you decide who said it first, okay? This meeting is adjourned. It is, what, 717? Thank you.